Here.
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 All right. Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item three, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the October 23 regular board meeting and the November 13 special board meeting, please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item four, I'd like a motion to approve the bills payable, please.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I know there has to be discussion on this one. There always is.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
Hearing nothing further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item five, superintendent's report.
Erin, I'm gonna skip out of order, sorry. Um, you'll be second, but, uh, and I used to say, I might as well say it, world's greatest workforce. I said it wrong for about seven years now.
(laughing).
And usually you correct me for five. Uh, but world's best workforce report were mandated by law, and we want to hear this anyway. So Jen Reichel, um, Jen's going back to get her doctorate, and she has college classes tonight, so that's why she jumped in front of you.
I am thankful to be able to go first, so I appreciate it. Um, all right. So, we are here to talk about world's best workforce. And so, we're gonna begin with a quick overview, for those of you who maybe don't remember, or for our viewing public who may need an introduction. So, the world's best workforce is the state's initiative to say, as school districts, our goal is to create the world's best workforce. And what they, um, expect of school districts is that we write goals in five different areas. We need to have a goal about kindergarten readiness, about reading well by the end of third grade, closing the achievement gap, high school graduation, and college and career readiness. So, I wanna share with you that this report is based on the 2018-19 school year. It's not about this school year, it's all about what we did last year. So, when we think about kindergarten readiness, the important thing to remember is that there are, like, statute requirements, what it means to be ready for kindergarten, and then we dig a little bit deeper. So, in order to be ready for kindergarten, a kiddo needs to be at least five years old by September 1st, and they have to have had their early childhood screening. That's it, then they're ready for K. When we write our goals, we're not writing the goals of, what is the basis for readiness for K, but what does it mean to be prepared for the rigors of kindergarten? And I know it's really hard to hear rigors of kindergarten, because we know that kindergarten isn't AP Calc, but there are some things that kiddos need to be ready to do in order to go to school and be ready to learn along with their peers. And so, we need to be mindful of, when we write our goal, what does that mean? And the state expects that we have SMART goals, that they're specific, they're measurable, they're attainable, they're realistic and time-bound, and they look at our goals and they give us some feedback. And so, we, as a school district community and our kindergarten partnership, or pre-K partnership that I'll talk about a little bit later, have talked about what can we write our goal around? And we know that literacy is super important, mathematics, and that understanding of number sense is really important, and that social-emotional learning is critical, but the hard part about that social-emotional is it's really hard to write a measurable goal. So, we have some strategies related to that social-emotional, but our goal lives in that realm of literacy. And so, our goal for the 18-19 school year, working toward all students being academically ready for kinder, we will increase the percentage of students who meet district criteria of identifying 13 uppercase, 13 lowercase letters, and eight letter sounds. You might ask, where the heck do those numbers come from? Well, they've done some studies and our, uh, some colleagues in Bloomington who have high-end data folks, have watched the pattern of kids from entering kindergarten until their end of third grade, which is really what we're looking for. When we say, and that we'll get to that in the next goal, the end of third grade, we're looking for kids who can read at grade-level proficiency, because that means they're on the trajectory for success for the rest of their high school career and aren't in need of significant intervention. And the kiddos who could recognize 13 uppercase, 13 lowercase, and eight letter sounds when they walked in the door to kindergarten, were already on that path. And those kiddos who aren't there yet, we know we have to do some intervention. So, that's kind of not, uh, we're not saying if they can't do this, don't send them. Absolutely not. We want them. But, that's our marker to say, the kiddos who are not ready for this yet, then we need to focus some attention to help them get up to speed. Throughout their kindergarten year, they're gonna learn all of those things, but we know that kids who know 13 uppercase, lowercase, and eight letter sounds have had opportunity to have text in front of them, they're being read to at home, and, you know, there's a readiness to move ahead in literacy. Our second goal area is third grade reading, and I talked about that. Data-wise says if a kiddo is ready, um, a good reader at the end of third grade, meaning they're proficient at grade-level text, then they're on a trajectory for success for life. Those kiddos who aren't there yet need intensive intervention, and unfortunately, that intervention needs to be sustained over a long period of time, so that's why we intervene early. So, when we look at that third grade, we need to be mindful of what data is meaningful and manageable, and we have a couple of different pieces of data that we could use. Um, we have our MCA tests that I've talked about before. We have our BAS, our Benchmark Assessment System, which is something that all of our kiddos in elementary do two or three times a year, depending on their grade level. Kinder only does it twice a year. And then, we have our new assessment system. We used to do MAP, but now we do FastBridge, and FastBridge is shorter and gives really quality data. Um, and we're sticking to the MCA data, just because that's systemic and it's something that we've had in our practice for a long time. The BAS data is probably more meaningful to our teachers, but there's a little bit of subjectivity to that assessment, and we want a pretty objective test. So, that leads us to our 18-19 goal of working toward all third-grade students being proficient in reading. We want to increase from 55.5 to 58% of third graders meeting or exceeding expectations on the MCAs. For closing the achievement gap, Minnesota unfortunately is among the states with the highest achievement gap statewide, and really, it's looking at raising up our non-white students and not holding back our white students. We want all of our kids to grow, but we want those lower achieving students, which tend to be our black and brown students, to grow a little bit farther and faster. And so, the way that we look at achievement gap right now is taking a look at the growth of their MCA score. So, there's a, a metrics on the MDE site that says, if you earned this score in fourth grade, then typically you earned this score in fifth grade, and that's medium growth. And what we're looking for is, do most of our kids meet that typical growth or go beyond that? We don't want them to grow less than what's typical. And so, we want to increase from 77.3% of our kids who are making medium or high growth to 78% of our kids making medium or high growth. And then, graduation rates. The question that we need to think about is, do we look at four-year, or six-year, or seven-year, or eight-year? And the, the things that we need to be mindful of, four-year is that typical pattern of graduation, but in that four-year, sometimes the data is skewed for those kids who have, um, access to more than four years of school because they have an IEP. And so, our data doesn't look as high in that four-year data, because we by rights should allow them to continue their education up till 21. Um, this year, we have shifted to that, um, four-year graduation rate, just to keep it simple. When we look at six or seven years, then we're really looking at data from kids that are a cohort of kids from a long time ago, and we want some more immediacy to our data. So, we're looking at, um, increasing from 96 to 97% of students meeting high school graduation requirements. So, those are the goals. Oh, nope, there's one more. College and career readiness. And this is the one that in meeting with district staff development, with the parent advisory, the curriculum parent advisory committee, that we feel is a little fluffy. It's quite honestly not our best written goal, but what we don't want, what the, the will of the groups with whom I work don't want, is to set a goal that's ACT, because the ACT isn't a meaningful data point for all of our students. And so, we're trying to figure out, how do we make this measurable but meaningful to all of our kids? So, what we did a few years ago is we created our list of college and career readiness standards for Hastings, things that we believe that all kids should be prepared to show us in order to be college and career-ready. And so, then we invite our seniors to do a perception survey, asking them, how often have you had opportunities to practice these skills over the course of your career? It's perception data, so it's a little bit fluffy. They're seniors who are on their way out, so it might be that inflated, hey, I'm so excited to be near graduation, or it might be, now it's my chance to tell you how I'm, you know, fearful of what's happening. So, w- we're in this place that maybe it's not the best, but right now, it's better than ACT, because it's more meaningful, and it's one of those areas we really do need to be more mindful of and, um, perhaps craft a new goal. So, we want to increase from 88.5% to 91% of the kids who take that, to have a high level of confidence in their college and career readiness, um, skills as measured by that survey. Make sense? Okay. So, now, I'm gonna bring you to our website, and this is something that you all can access on your own, if you go to Teaching and Learning, and then, once you're in there, there's World's Best Workforce 2019 down at the very bottom. There's also 2018, so you can look at that data. And I've put together our World's Best Workforce in a, uh, report in an infographic. It's easy for people to look at pictures and get a snapshot of the data, but for people who want more, they can dig in. This infographic is, uh, linked, so anything here that is kindergarten readiness or the school bus, you'll get to the kindergarten readiness page anywhere on this infographic. The books are related to Read Well by Third Grade, the chart about achievement gap, that goes there, graduation cap, graduation rates, and our college and career readiness checklist. So, this reiterates those same goals that I just talked about, and then, we get to learn a little bit about how did we do. So, for kindergarten readiness, we saw a dip of, from that 55.3% last year to 45.8%. It's really hard to understand why that happens, because we don't have a lot of, um, ways to collect data about what's happening outside of the community. One of the things that I've shared with you before that we are doing, that's hopefully helping with this or informing an increase, is we've formed a pre-K leadership committee that has representation from Tilden, from our non-public schools, from our center-based programs, and from our, uh, family, friend, and neighbor home daycare. Our home daycare person has a Facebook page, so she's reaching out to anyone who opts into that Facebook page. And we're sharing, not only what is our goal, but here are some strategies. Last year, we offered monthly professional development for folks to come in and hear from kindergarten teachers, from our special ed counterparts in early childhood, just talking about, here are some strategies that you can do with the kiddos that you serve that will help make, um, progress toward our, uh, goal. We're not getting the reach that we want to, and, uh, we don't have any direct supervision over the people on our committee. We can ask them to share, but we can't mandate that they share. And so, it's really trying to figure out, what are the mechanisms that we can continue to expand our reach out in the public to help people know? We need to put books in kiddos' hands, and we need to have them practice. And that's really what we're looking for there. Our Read Well by Third Grade, we saw another slight decrease from 55.5% in the spring of 2018 to 53.6%. This is not a huge surprise to me. When anytime we begin a new initiative, and as I've shared with you before, we've started down this path of a literacy initiative with professional development with our elementary teachers, we often see what's called an implementation dip. And so, I'm hopeful that this year, we're gonna do a little rebounding and come back. I think a couple of the things that, um, are feeding into this particular data point is we have some, um, practices in our K1-2 with foundational skills that I've shared with you before, where we had really great practices happening, but they weren't systemic. And last year, which we can't count in this report, because it'll be in next year's report, we found a resource that's going to bring some systemic approach to our foundational skills, and our elementary, our primary teachers are very excited about having a resource that, that's grounded in research that allows them to do the day-to-day, um, foundational skills in phonics and phonemic awareness, and those things that prepare kids to be able to read well by third grade. So, I'm hopeful that over the next year or two, we're gonna see an increase, especially because of that, and partnered with our, uh, professional development that we're doing with Bonnie Houck. We're digging into the standards and really unpacking, what is it that those standards are asking us, of us in our instruction, and what's the level of rigor we should be asking from kids? We really have been working for the last six months or so, not only on building quality learning targets, but thinking about what are the success criteria, and helping kids know, here's what you need to do in order to show that you've met proficiency, because that's one of those research-based strategies, that if kids know what's expected of them, then they can work toward that. And if we keep it this magic secret, well, they're guessing at a target that they don't understand. So, I'm hopeful that we're gonna see some really great progress next year in that one. The achievement gap, um, we decreased from 77.3 to 74.85. I, I'm not super concerned, because when we look at the data in that mid-to-high 70s is a really nice number of kids who are making medium to high growth, and the fluctuation wasn't terrible. We did go down, but we had a pretty high number. I'm not saying that we want to work against that. I'm also, um, not sure that this is the best worded goal that we have. MCAs are not a great data point. We use it for two of our goal areas. The state will tell you that this is really an indication of how our system is working, and, um, when we look at the state, the data is super valid, because we've got the whole group of kids around the state. And the more focused we are in the cohort of kids that we're looking at, the more unreliable the data becomes. So, uh, I think I've mentioned before, when we look at an individual student's score, the standard error, measure of error, for a kiddo who is right in the middle, grade level 50, because that's the score of somebody who's in the middle, really, that standard of error says they're somewhere between partially proficient and almost exceeds. Like, that's huge, that it's not a, not a great data point, but it's what we have. Graduation rates, we increased from 92.6 to 95.7, students graduating within four years. We had been looking at that six-year metric before, and we've narrowed to that four-years to make it, um, more focused on what we can see with the kiddos who are, like, in our vicinity. And then, the college and career readiness, as you'll see when I bring you to the website, there are so many different questions, it's really hard to say, here's where we did better, here's where we did worse. On the whole, kids felt like they are more prepared than the previous year, but that data point is hard to find. So, that's why it's a little bit squishy. So, now, when we click on things, you're gonna get to these, or the easy way to get there is to, um, look at any of those to drill down. So, I'm gonna just give you a quick preview, because this talks about all of the things that I've shared with you already. So, we have the data going back to 2015 of the number and percent of kids meeting 13 uppercase, 13 lowercase, eight letter sounds, and all three. And what you'll find is that uppercase, the majority of kids get their uppercase letters. And then, there are slightly fewer who have lowercase, and then, it's those letter sounds that just change our percentage significantly. So, that's one of the pieces that when we do our professional development, we have to communicate that pretty clearly. And then, this talks about those strategies that I shared with you already. And then, each of the subsequent pages do the same thing. It shares with you the data and those, um, strategies that we've been implementing thus far. Is there a particular page that you'd like to go to? Because I feel like I've been talking non-stop for like, 10, 15, however many minutes. 19?
Third grade reading.
Okay. All right. So, when we look at us and the state, and sometimes there are districts that say, well, we're at or above the, or at or, you know, slightly above the state, we're doing great. And I would not want for us to be comparing ourselves to the state. Um, we need to be better than the state, because our demographic in our district does not mimic the demographic of some of those larger districts that influence the overall readiness of the state. What we will find, and we can see this if we go to the, um, school report card on MDE, that of our three schools, that Pinecrest continues to be our lowest-performing school, and, um, McCullough continues to be our highest-performing school, and we just need to continue to focus our efforts and make sure that we're working, um, with more resources and more specific support for Pinecrest. What questions do you have about third grade reading?
What are comparable districts doing in third grade reading? Like, you know, Rosemont or somebody, or maybe somebody more our size?
Yes. So, I've created a list of those schools who are similar to us in size and demographics. And as a district, we're probably in the lowest third, but if we compare our schools, some of our schools outperform their district. It's more challenging to look at each of the individual schools in those comparable districts, but I can get their district data, but we outperform them typically in math, and we underperform them typically in reading. Yep.
Can you drill down on this, to the school level?
So, in this one, it's a screenshot, but if we go to the MDE website, we can. Would you like me to go there?
For this one? Yeah. Let's take a look.
All right. So, if you'd like, you can Google MDE report card, and that comes up with the Minnesota report card. And then, there are a whole lot of things that you can look up over to the side. We're gonna look at how well our students doing, and we're gonna look at mastering the standards. And this site has become increasingly, uh, cumbersome over the past couple of years, so unless you're in there a lot, I think that our families would be like, oh, I don't know how to, uh, get the information. And we're going to, we can choose achievement or progress, and we're gonna go to achievement. And then, we come over here, we click on state, and we can put in our Hastings School District. And so, we can look side-by-side at how are we doing as a district, and we're gonna look at, oh, we can do that. Uh, this is not third grade reading. I have to go, I think I have to go here. Sorry. Okay. So, we're going to here, reading.
That's still all grades?
Yep.
Oh, then we can filter by.
And then, we can filter by third grade. And, you know, the, another challenge, and it certainly isn't a, a challenge unique to us, third grade is the first time that kids participate in a standardized test, not just here, across the state. And so, you know, that's a, a wonderment about how we manage that. So, then, we can look at McCullough, and we'll go reading, and we'll go third grade. And so, what this chart or this graph does is it says, the gray are the percent of kids who do not meet, the blue are the partially meets, and then, the green and the dark blue are the group of kids who meet or exceed. And when we look at our goal, we lump that group together, meets and exceeds both help us there. Um, so, we can look at 2017, 18, and 19, and I know I'm jumping back and forth, but you can take a look at those, that bar chart, and I will, and here, and we'll look at Kennedy, reading, third grade. I want trend, probably. And, done. So, we can see here in the data that Kennedy, if we combine those, we're looking at, you know, 50%, 53% in 2017, not so great in 18, um, slight increase. Yes.
My only question is whether or not we're inadvertently selecting a smaller group of students, because that's not an appropriate count number.
Uh, well.
For grades, or is, does count not mean student?
Right.
So, I, I mean, you can differentiate, I, like, entertain myself occasionally by puttering around in the site, so when you look at students including, it's.
Yeah. So, in third grade, let's look at that.
Because we should have not.
Twenty, thirty, ninety-nine.
Is that the right number of students?
Thirty-nine, eighty-two, that's ninety, ninety-three students.
I suppose in Kennedy, yeah.
At Kennedy, yep. Thirty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, close to 100 at McCullough.
That's about right. Okay.
Yep.
That feels small, but.
It does, and that's why, I mean, when we look at the district, and then, we narrow down to a building, we're talking about fewer kids. And then, I'll just come up here and we'll look at Pinecrest. And there we are with Pinecrest. All right. So, I'm going back here. And so, when we look ahead at, uh, World's Best Workforce, some of the things that we have been doing the last couple of years, um, in each August, I invite district or schools to come together with their leadership teams. We spend some time hearing about these district goals, and then, they are invited to look at and refine their school goals, paying attention to, how do these school goals and the work that you do on a day-to-day basis support the larger district goals? Um, we, over the past couple of years, I tend to have not only a world's best workforce sort of overview, but I invite them to, um, do some learning. So, a couple of years ago, we talked about the Plan Do Reflect, which is how our PLCs should work in a way that helps them really dig into, what are the teacher actions that I'm doing that's supporting student learning, making some plans, and then digging into the data, not the MCA at the end-of-the-year data, but the things that we can collect on a day-to-day basis. And then, this past year, I talked about what is meaningful evidence, and have them think about, not just an end-of-unit test, but what are things that you can look at and observe students doing in your class every single day that helps you know that you're on track? Because we can't wait till those end-of-year tests to know or not know if the work that we're doing is meaningful and helpful. In February, we're going to do a mid-year check-in, so I'll bring those teams back, and we'll talk about, here are the goals that you articulated in August. Now, let's talk about what are you doing about those goals, so they aren't a goal that sits on a shelf, but really does impact the day-to-day instruction. Um, we have gone all-in with self-directed learning in our PLCs, and you've seen the evidence come out of that in our Avid program, in, um, some of the other work, uh, at the high school, they've done some growth mindset things. Our elementary PLCs are doing amazing work with Plan Do Reflect, and really thinking about building collaborative lessons and being really thoughtful about the kinds of assessments and the work they're doing with kids. And then, as we look at, you know, World's Best Workforce with our parent groups, with our committees, it's one of those foundational pieces that when you come to a meeting with me, at some point, you hear about World's, World's Best Workforce, because everything we do should tie back to these bigger goals that we have. So, what questions do you have for me?
I'm not quite sure how concerned I should feel as I look at some of the third-grade numbers, knowing that, you know, the mantra of, you spend the first four years learning to read, and the rest of your life, reading to learn?
Mm-hmm.
And if, in some of the examples that we showed up there, we have approximately 50% of a given site that is not meeting standards or is below standard.
Yeah.
I, I mean, uh, I don't want to, as you said, as we. That these children are being tested in this manner, and all the different. that these children are being tested in this manner and all the different, you know, pieces that go into it. I'm just having a hard time knowing, you know.
How much panic?
Yeah, am I hitting the panic button here?
I would say, if we sustain this data point over the next two years, which is where, given our um, intentional focus on those foundational skills, which will come up in a systemic way to third grade over the next couple of years, coupled with our professional development, if we don't see movement, then we need to hit the panic button. Because we are being super intentional about our intervention right now with our staff and our curriculum review. And that takes time, that we have to give it time in order to take hold. But like I said, in a couple of years, if we don't see this data move, then we could hit that button.
I know that you might not have this number. Does staff turnover play any role in this at all? I mean.
I would say, yes. My experience and just looking at, you know, what research I've had access to, the quality of teaching, when you look at the journey of a teacher, year seven and eight is when you hit the stride of really good effective teaching. Not years one, two, three, or even four, five, six, but it's seven and eight. And so when we have people who are coming in and who don't have experience, they're working really hard and doing the very best they can, but they don't have a tool belt full of tools that their colleagues who've been in the game for a longer have. So, yes, and at the same time, McCullough is doing quite well and they seem to have the most turnover. And Pinecrest has the most sustained staff and we have some work to do there.
So I guess I have a couple of questions. I feel like I brought this one up before. But have we looked at um, the loss of the media specialists in the elementary schools? And how that may or may not be impacting reading at the elementary level?
It's a good question. I have not looked at that. I'm not quite sure how we would look at quantifiable data, but I am certain we could look at qualitative data that would, you know, inform kind of books we have access to and supporting teachers in knowing how to evolve their classroom libraries. We are doing that with our P D though.
And I have seen other research studies on that, talking about the importance of the um, media specialist and, you know, the effects that that can have on kids' readings.
Sure.
If that gets brought up. Um, and then I guess my other question would be, so as we talk about the achievement gap and also as we talk about the growing diversity in Hastings, and if we're not able to work with the achievement gap already as, as it's here, then how are we seeing this projected out in the long term and, and what can we be doing now?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, again, I'm not sure how we would extrapolate data into the future about a, a cohort of kids and the changing demographics that we're unsure of. I know that especially at the high school right now is where we're beginning to focus some efforts around culturally relevant teaching. It's a huge strand that we have through our achievement and integration plan and the professional development that we're offering. So, related to that college and career readiness and the achievement gap, we're investing our resources, and when I say resources, really time resources, into training with Avid, um, with reading strategies and with Inquiry have been the first two that we did in September and then that again, those opportunities will be available in November. And then in January, we're going to offer a culturally relevant teaching strand where a couple of our teachers, one of our teachers and our equity coordinator, along with our contact at Avid are going to co-build a C R T session that's available for staff. When we look at the professional development expectations that we have in our achievement and integration plan, it's not just P D, but we have a specific line item focused on culturally relevant teaching P D. So, we are invested in helping grow the understanding of our teachers, looking at what's the culture they need to build in their classroom in order to make sure that all kids feel invited to the learning that they're expected to do. And how do we manage our instructional strategies and the way that we design lessons? To be mindful of the, that we're not asking kids to check their identity at the door. That they are who they are and we welcome them as they are into our classrooms. So we're a work in progress there, but it, there's some intentionality. As we look to, to expand Avid to the middle school, and I'm hopeful that that will happen soon, not necessarily as an elective piece that changes the dynamics of their structure, but more of that school-wide strategies, which doesn't change their schedule. That culturally relevant teaching strand will be important for them to participate in as well. We just had a higher level of readiness with our high school folks to jump on this work because they were receptive to their student voices that they had come in a couple of years ago. And it, it was eye-opening for them to say, wow, we're not aware of all the things that are happening in our school and we, we know better now, so we need to do better now. And so, they're excited about it, eager to learn and ready to go.
And then do we see that culturally responsive learning going down to the elementary level? Because so much of the learning experiences started, you know, when you're young.
Yes. So when I look ahead to the future and I see C R T, that culturally relevant teaching is so embedded in the Avid philosophy. I'm, I'm all in, like I, Kool-Aid, the whole jug is in me with Avid. And I feel like it's just a good vehicle to help teachers recognize the practices that they're already doing that are good practices, but gives them a language around it. And it helps them be intentional to use the things that maybe they have been occasionally using. Right now, we need to focus on literacy because our teachers have to have an understanding of how to unpack those standards and really get our ducks in a row with literacy. And then once we finish that initiative, I'm hopeful then we can begin infusing Avid strategies. A couple, maybe last year, I was able to do a site visit at a couple of elementaries who do Avid. And in talking with their administration, they said, you have to do your hardcore content P D first. And this is a layer that happens after because it's how to implement the content that you have to have first. So, we're doing it in an order that was recommended by some colleagues who are doing amazing things in their schools.
I've got a question on, let's kind of jump back a little bit to the uh, ready for kindergarten aspect. And you said, trying to bring in like the daycares and get, trying to get down to those folks.
Yeah.
What are other districts doing? Are they having the same problem? Or, or we don't know?
Right, the, it's, it's kind of interesting. There are people reaching out to our district, seeing us as a model to say, ooh, you have this partnership with all of these providers? How did you get that started and how are you doing that? Our results aren't there, but we've got a process that people are interested and excited about. And I think it's just that ongoing, we have to just keep finding ways to communicate. Because I think what we're finding is that some of those family, friend and neighbor daycares may not be licensed daycare providers. They are doing a service to support kids for their friends or their neighbors or their family. And there's a hesitancy to come to some professional development that they're gonna be called out for not being licensed. And we don't want that. We aren't checking, you know, we just wanna offer some learning to whomever wants to take advantage of that learning. This year, we're trying something different with our professional development and we're gonna do a Saturday half-day, hoping to get lots of voices at the high school or at one of the elementaries. I think we're still negotiating where that will happen. But we're looking at a February date to invite folks in, potentially hear from kindergarten teachers, maybe our early childhood special ed, our family outreach person, talking about social emotional learning, because all of those pieces are connected to literacy. And we wanna just help them grow however we can. So, I don't know that I answered your question. I don't know what other districts are doing, but they are looking to us because we have something cool going on.
Keep charging ahead.
Yep, that's what we're gonna do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are we good? Y'all good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
Thanks Jen. Alright, Erin is here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll skip to Erin.
You don't get that reception everywhere, do you?
Dead silence.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the time to be here and it's good to see, you know, the presentations, what we're here for and the passion behind it is excellent. And I know they've had to sit through my presentation before and it may come off dry, which is exactly what you want here on a presentation. Nice quiet audit presentation. Um, I'm here tonight to present the results of our audit for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Uh, we should have before you the three documents, the financial statement, um, the student activity report and then our management report that is to summarize the results of our audit. We put together the PowerPoint to run through and uh, present the results of the audit. So, as much of my name is Aaron Nielsen. I'm a partner with M N K R, uh, an independent accounting firm to come out and review the financial transactions for the district, putting together the financial statements. So, with that, I'll run through the PowerPoint presentation if you have any questions or we have to try and answer them at the end. So, um, our role as your independent auditors to issue opinion on the financial statements for the district audit and then that separate student activity audit. Um, we also have our report on internal controls and compliance for the financial statement audit. Um, the separate single audit as well as. Okay. So, the reports on our internal controls and compliance for the financial statement audit, the federal single audit, as well as then the state laws and regulations and the manual for activity fund accounting. And I'll get right to the results for this past year's audit. For the district audit, we've issued what is known as an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements. So, exactly what you're looking for, that clean opinion that the financial statements are fairly presented as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen and for the year then ended. Uh, for the district's audit on internal control and compliance, we're also pleased to report we didn't have any findings for all the areas that we listed with the single audit, uh, the government auditing standards requirements or that office of the state auditor's legal compliance manual. The next slide is on the separate student activity audit. You'll notice it says our opinion is qualified, but the student activity audit is under a modified basis of accounting, a regulatory basis as provided by the Minnesota Department of Educated, or M D E, Minnesota Department of Education. Uh, and that report is of cash balances and receipts and disbursements are fairly presented. Uh, we have just two comments, one on internal control um, that we document about the completeness of knowing the cash receipts. And I would wanna share, I actually have that comment with all of my student activity audits. It's, you know, small amounts and various groups making sure, okay, did they all get in as of the year end? So, um, that becomes the comment that we have there. Uh, the untimely deposits with, there is a compliance requirement with the student activity audit, uh, that those deposits are made within one week or within seven days, they say. Um, and again, that's not an uncommon finding we do have from time to time with our districts. Uh, in particular, if they're doing some fundraising, they might be gathering dollars at the front end of it and then depositing it at one shot. And so, some of those transactions we see might have been over a week. And um, with our audit, we tend to err on oversharing and not reporting it for you. Um, the last point I'll make, you can keep the slide here, but we do have an emphasis of a matter paragraph with the student activity audit that you may have noticed this year because it will be the last student activity audit, separate audit that you have. Because with the new G A S B requirements, they now have to be reported within the general fund. So that audit will go away and we'll include those in the general fund's presentation in the future, um, for all districts. Uh, the slide on the general fund financial position, so we've got ten years of history for you, looking at the cash and investment balance, the unrestricted fund balance for the district and then the annual expenditures. So, you can see really a stable operation over this time. The biggest fluctuation you might see is the cash and investment changes, which has um, fluctuated from in those early years because of changes in how the state metered cash payments to districts. Uh, at one point, we're almost to a sixty, forty, where you'd receive sixty percent in the current year and now we're back to that, receiving ninety percent of your cash flow in the year and then receiving the ten percent the following year. So, we've been at several years of that, so you can see the last few years are pretty steady. Um, and then the district's planned spend-out of unrestricted fund balance in recent years. Uh, looking at a little more detail of that fund balance of the general fund with the slide we have before you, we look at the components of that equity or fund balance of the general fund. Um, with non-spendable, those are the resources that are tied up in prepaid's or inventory. They've, the dollars have gone out, the district here simply haven't used those resources yet. Uh, restricted fund balance would include long-term facilities, maintenance, operating capital and some of those where you receive dollars, but there are restrictions on how they're used. And that, you can see is actually where you had the largest component increase within the general fund this past year, so. And then unrestricted is the committed, assigned and unassigned components. So, um, if I'm recalling correctly from a couple of years ago, as you can see, that assigned component is where the district had adopted budgets, where you were deficit spending. And so, as we're presenting that, like tonight, we would know you've already dedicated some of your resources to balance the budget in theory. So, um, you actually have had a balanced budget for the last couple of years, so you can see that's why that unassigned category is at zero in eighteen and nineteen. So, overall, you can see the fund balance did improve or increase this past year um, with an uptick in that unrestricted and the unassigned component of fund balance. So, having favorable uh, results within revenues and expenditures, which I'll move on to with my next couple, next few slides. So, um, before I get there, um, I'll just mention the uh, pupil units and the students you serve. Uh, key component of funding is driven by the number of students you've served. I'm sure, as you know, the district has been experiencing a declining enrollment, enrollment, as you can see over this ten-year period. Uh, this past year, the district was down about thirty-two students or about less than one percent, about seven tenths of one percent was the change in that average daily membership or adjusted average daily membership. And I've got a couple more slides with the general fund, so we do spend most of our time with the general fund. It is the primary operating fund for the district. So, looking at revenues this past year, we've got that budget, um, actual and prior year comparison. Uh, just a couple of comments for the overall size of the district. Your operation is at about fifty-five point three million dollars, I've noted uh, in my copy here. This past year, you came in again very close to what was anticipated in your revenue budget within a half a percent or four tenths of one percent, just over budget. And that was about four point eight percent over the prior year. So, improvements in that funding formula, the general education basic funding formula of long-term facilities, as well as um, special education funding has contributed to some of those changes. And then I'm sure I've commented in the past too, you can see by this graph, it really does focus on where are your resources coming from to finance the operation of the general fund. So, um, districts are dependent on the state of Minnesota and where those resources are coming from. Making up about seventy-one percent this past year and then followed by your local property taxes at twenty-two percent. I've got a similar slide, my last slide for the general fund with the expenditures, the comparison budget to actual, uh, as well as to prior year. This past year, your expenses totaled fifty-two point eight million dollars, coming in uh, under three percent under budget, uh, two point seven percent under budget. And they were just a half a percent over the prior year. And again, similar to the revenues, there is a concentration where that spending then is occurring. And you can see in salaries and benefits, which we do see with our school districts and uh, educating the students within uh, the districts we work with. Um, for your district, making up almost eighty percent, seventy-nine and a half percent of the spending this past year in the general fund. The other two operating funds that we've included here, um, the volume of activity isn't nearly what it is for the general fund. So we just have focused on that year-end net position or the fund balance, I should say, for the food service special revenue fund. Uh, for the past five years, the community service special revenue fund. A slight increase this past year with the food service, a slight decrease with the community service, both coming in close to budget. Uh, the food service special revenue fund has expenses of about two point three million dollars this past year and that year-end fund balance is approximately twenty-two percent of their annual expenditures. Uh, the community service fund with a slight decrease there, uh, their expenses are similar at two point four million dollars and their year-end fund balance is at about thirty-two point eight percent of expenses or expenditures, I should say, for all these governmental funds. My next slide is the internal service fund. So the district has now been self-insured for a few years with the health and dental, um, self-insured plans for the district. So, this is a, um, both of those funds combined individually, both of the plans of the dental and the health. And you can see a little bit of the trends here from seventeen to eighteen to nineteen, that fund balance or net position when we talk about internal service fund. That fund balance or net position when we talk about internal service funds has increased each of the past year, but some of the increases in claims have reduced that change that you were experiencing from '17 to '18 to '19. And then my last slide is always probably the most challenging to discuss where we see the biggest changes. So to this point, I believe with all of my districts, the focus has been what we've just got done talking about, the individual funds and how you're budgeting for general fund, food service fund, community service fund. The slide I have before you here is where we're consolidating all of the funds together. So this one captures the long-term perspective. So when we talk about the general fund, we don't include long-term bonds of the district, or the capital assets, the buildings of the district. And this is the opportunity or the requirement in government standards to then capture all of those governmental funds, as well as the internal service funds for your district, and roll them all together, and then actually add the capital assets and the long-term obligations for the district. So you're seeing quite a shift from the prior year when we look at that. And we're also capturing then the long-term obligations for pensions, those statewide pension plans that was added a few years ago. So you can see the improvement in that overall net position entity-wide. And I'd like to be, you know, super excited, and it's good news that that increased, but it isn't resources that you have on hand now. Because as you can see, the biggest change there was within the pension area with the pension adjustments increasing about $12.1 million, and that falling right down to that unrestricted component. So you can see the pension obligations is what's involved or included within the unrestricted resources for the district. So it is good news, those pensions have improved in their presentations this past year. But we've also had presentations in the past where we were talking the other way, where those pensions suffered and had drastic change, the opposite direction. So nice to see that improvement. And you can also see the increase in the restricted category. That's capturing that operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance that we talked about in the general fund. And then also the debt service fund had an increase that you have required within that component for outstanding bonds of the district, where you're funding those over the long term. With that, I know I went through a lot of information, and I know there's a ton more within the documents before you, but if there's any questions or comments, I can try to answer.
How many schools do you typically audit, your firm?
We have about 30 school districts and then about 25 charter schools.
And I should have, I should have called you Rassus because you might not know this, and if you don't, that's fine. And I apologize for, I'm not trying to stump you. But, you know, you go back to nine to 10 years ago when the state was withholding 40% of the money, and all schools were then panicking because we didn't have money in our fund balance. Have you seen a pattern where school districts typically try to have more in their unrestricted fund balance to protect in that case that ever happens again?
So it's interesting, I mean, this is just a theory on our part that we look and we do, within your management report, we show the statewide average alongside districts. I know I don't have a slide on at hand, but I can really share it for board members here on page seven of that management report document. And we've noted in there, what we've seemed to find is, yes, when districts were worried about the financial condition everybody's, of the state, then everybody's tightening their belt. And when you think, okay, there aren't any resources, in some cases, we've seen that financial position actually increase. And then when they feel comfortable, okay, there is going to be a steady stream, or they should be, then they'll ease up. And you can see that on the statewide average where that has kind of ticked down at those times. But when, when you feel like there is a concern, the 40%, okay, we need to make sure our fund balance is able to handle if there's a tax shift or, you know, cash flow things, because you may have to borrow for those purposes. But the alternative to them not shifting those aids at those times is worse, because at least then it's just a cash flow impact and not reducing funding to get to that same goal there to balance their budget.
I know that definitely there was that trend among school districts and superintendents back when that was happening. And I didn't know, you know, when you get further away from that point in time, your mind says, oh, well, that'll never happen again. So I was just wondering, so thank you.
And I've always found it interesting when you look at that statewide average, you know, from that table, it went 17% to 20%, but that's the biggest change from 20 to 11 on the statewide average. And then it's stayed at 20 to 22% even over that. So, you know, but you've seen drastic shifts in certain districts, I'm sure. But overall, as a pool, you can see kind of same concept when we're talking about the students and trying not to narrow it down to one district.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Aaron? If you don't mind, Scott, I wouldn't mind what, because I got quite a few other things to go through while he's still here. If we could just move to the motion item and see if we're going to approve it, or?
That'd be great.
So that'd be item number six. I'd like a motion to accept the 2018-2019 audit report, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Besides, I thank you to Aaron. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thanks, Aaron. Okay, back to the superintendent's report.
Indiana will be getting, I've got some PowerPoints, and then I've had some miscellaneous that have been just happening over the last few days that I want to just update you as a board too, that aren't on the superintendent report. But if you, if you look up on the screen, one of the things that Aaron mentioned, and as you as board members, I'd say in the last four years, out of any board that I've worked with, it's been a time period where special ed funding has been all over the place. And it's so difficult to predict, I don't know, Jim, how much have they changed the formula in the last four years? They've gone to this formula, that formula, this formula. Even since I started drafting this to show you as a school board, Jen was at a meeting, I don't know, this week, Friday, and this has already changed from the state. So one of my cautions to you as a board is that don't get too excited when you hear what special ed funding. I got really excited on this. It was, I was at a presentation at 9:17, there were probably 25 school districts there, and I came away from that. Tom Melcher from the state of Minnesota was there. And I was like, this is really, really, really great news for all districts and Hastings for the next few years. I still think it's good news, but now I'm, after Jen went to the meeting on Friday, I'm a little bit more cautious. But just to give you a feel, the state had been using data since 2011. Think about that. So we're having our director of finance trying to make a prediction for us on special education revenue from data from seven to eight years ago.
So they're looking at data for like students served or level of service required?
Yep, all that.
What's that kind of?
Your costs from back in that year.
Okay, where's the base?
So as they're looking now to change it from in 2021, they'll be using the 2018 data. That will, of course, help us a little bit because we have some higher costs in that year as a district. So that's good news. I think it's good that the state is recognizing we need to help schools more with special education funding. And what they did legislatively was probably the best thing in the last five years of saying, this cross-subsidy, we do need to help schools out. And for board members who don't, the cross-subsidy basically means we're going to take money from your general fund, or you have to take money from your general fund and use it to subsidize your special ed costs. That's what cross-subsidy means. And I don't know if you can go back at all? Oh. Yep, I've been told I had a big head before, so. So it's great that the state legislators now, this is good news, because if they, if they thought it last year, as we continue to move forward in the next few sessions, I think they'll continue to keep that on their forefront, or so I hope. So one of the things that they did this year was they said, we need to help these schools that are cross-subsidizing from their general fund and paying their special ed costs. And we're going to give some aid at 2.6%. Well, they ask every school district then, well, how much money are you taking out of your general fund to help pay for your special ed costs? And we're going to give you a little extra kicker because of that.
So that's 2.6% of the cross-subsidy?
Yes.
Would the number provide by the district?
Right. So that's good news, that we'll be getting $100 and some thousand dollars. And then if mathematically my own head, I'm kind of like tripling that then, because if the next year, you're going to get 6.43%, I'm just tripling that. And so I'm thinking, well, the Hastings district, that's good news, because...
It really is a lot closer to double than triple. Triple would be about 9%.
Well, oh, yeah.
Sorry, it's my pessimism coming in here. But still.
So I'm like, okay, that's...
But the point is...
That's going to help us because it will help your general fund over the next couple of years. Good news. The cap is eliminated. What that means is the state of Minnesota at one point had said, we're going to give all schools aid on special ed, but we're going to cap the dollar amount.
Statewide?
Statewide, every school. Some schools weren't above that cap for them. They didn't have as much special needs costs. We were above it. Many schools were, I'll tell you, most schools were...
The bigger, the bigger districts, I'm sure, were way above it.
So what they've said now is, we're going to remove that cap. So let's say Hastings was spending $500,000 above that, that cap. Now, now we're going to get some aid on that $500,000.
Right, because that $500,000 would never be in any formula.
Right. So I was ecstatic about all this, because this means a big chunk of money for Hastings to run their school district over the next three to four years at least. But when Jen went to the meeting with another financial person, it was, well, we might then change the proration of the aid. So let's say where it was 70%, now they'll maybe give you 65%.
Change in the variables.
So I still think that it's going to be good. But what that tells me, if they're talking about changing the proration, they're starting to, they're now start, starting to see what this might cost them. I still think it's good news. I just don't think it's as good as news as what I thought it was two weeks ago or three weeks ago. But it's good news for a lot of schools. And I think if you still keep coming back to one of the core points, as legislators have figured it out, we do need to give some help in this area, because these are some of the costs are really, really rising. So then on the next slide, it's again to focus in on enrollment. Because as board members, you know that enrollment drives revenue. And I don't, you know, the, and there's all different formulas for a student enrollment. ADM is your average daily membership, that's the kids, you could actually go touch their belly buttons. Correct me at any point if I'm wrong. Weighted average daily membership means your high school kids are worth a little bit more, they're worth 1.2. So if you have 1,000 high school students, the state takes that, and you can take that times 1.2, you're up to 1,200, and you get your money based off of that. So that just tells you where we're at with our enrollment. You can see that pretty good balance overall in our elementaries again. But it shows the continued pattern of declining enrollment. According to our best guess, we've been pretty good at this. Kim and Jen have been pretty good at this, at projecting enrollment. Next year, it looks like we got a year where we're going to be pretty stable. And then the year after that, it looks like it's going to drop 80 to 100.
But this year, we were 40 lower than projected, right?
Yeah.
So if we're projecting staying stable, if it's like this year, we're still looking at...
We could be, yeah.
Potentially, because 40 is quite a big number.
Right, and I typically take $9,000 times a student as an average, high school or a little bit. But I usually use the word 9,000, so if we drop 40, that's 360 grand. So I just wanted to do a three-year, all of you know that we've dropped from 5,100 students over my tenure being here to this. So it's been something we've been dealing with. The next slide then. So Aaron mentioned it again, we've talked about it at work sessions, that the state said now that your student activity accounts have to be part of your general fund. This is another statute, I'll just let you read it. This came from our attorney. I don't, I'll give you some examples of this, and I don't necessarily agree with this, but it's a state statute. So what activity might happen at your school site that is an extension of your extracurricular activity? So for me, you know, I don't live in Hastings, I had daughters that were in softball. Softball is an extracurricular activity. For 12 years, I organized a major ninth, eighth, and seventh grade tournament, May 15th, or in the middle of May, for the Wasika School District where teams came in. The money went to the softball association. The school didn't care because they didn't have to spend money on busing. Everything could be right at their site, they got money for the concession stands, the school didn't care. I organized all the volunteers, it took like 50 volunteers. So that's why I kind of don't agree with this. But then I, then I step back and say, okay, so what's the difference? If I would have still organized the 50 volunteers and the money would have gone to the school, the school would have spent it on a softball batting cage, or softball helmets, or something. The only difference is, is that will some people have a perception that, well, I'm not going to volunteer to help with this event because I don't know for sure that the money's going to my kids, whatever. I mean, I get what the state's trying to do. And it, it could tie into some with our show choir too, that's an extracurricular activity. Takes money to run that program. So anyway, I just wanted, as we've been continuing to roll down through this path of the student activities being in the general fund, that's what our attorney has sent us on the statute. Do we have the first reading of the crowdfunding up there or not? Or I didn't tell you to do that. Or do we have it later on? Anyway, I'll just talk about the crowdfunding policy. I told the policy committee that I didn't have a chance for them to review it. What the crowdfunding policy ties back to is the fact that we've had discussions about, some of our staff wanted to start a GoFundMe. Some of our staff wanted to go out there and do a Save School, all these different funding. And what we had talked about in a work session of, hey, we like Donors Choose. Because Donors Choose is run by an outside organization, the money goes to them, it doesn't come to us, and there are steps in place where the principal has to approve what the item is that's going to get fundraised for. So anyway, that's what the crowdfunding policy ties to. It says that this is how we're going to, to do it. And I don't know if that, if we had that in the board packet or not.
It is, yep. I'm looking at it online right now.
So, and we decided to start small with it. And so I think our high school, our Kyle Latch maybe, our middle school, and Tilden, they're all going to get like one or two people from each of their sites to try it. Not Tilden. Dave Haveman, okay. So we've got three or four administrators that are going to have just try, because we don't want to roll this out and just have mass chaos either. So Jen has met with those four administrators, we're going to start rolling it out, and that's why we needed to have a policy on it. But really, it ties back to some work that we've already been doing. Donors Choose is what we're, who we're going to go with. And so at the high school, if Mike would approach me, I'd have to come up with an item that he would agree to, that we need. And then we'll put it on our website, and we'll, we're not going to advertise it strong because we don't want to make it look like we're always out there begging. We're hoping through, through word of mouth and through Donors Choose that people then will say, hey, that's something worthy. So I just wanted to run that by, and then at our December meeting, we'll look to, as you look at it, if you have any questions about it, just let me know, and then I'll pull the policy. if you have any questions about it, just let me know and then I'll pull the policy committee together, which we're probably gonna pull together in December anyway, there's one or two we still have to finalize.
I just wanna make clear that we're not trying this just because we want to try it. We're trying this because it's kind of come from the ground up. And we've had teachers approach and we've had staff go out on different platforms and try it. So this is, there's an interest in doing it. And we wanna be assured as a district that there's a common practice and that there's a responsible fund use. So it's, to thi, to this point, the policy is in response to some actions that have already been undertaken and just to try and provide clarity and consistency in practice.
Yep. Couple, I've got three or four more others that I just wanted to update you on. TransAct is through the Achievement Integration Grant, we had some money for TransAct, which we can translate documents. The state of Minnesota has purchased some core documents that can be translated. And we did our first ever use of the Achievement Integration Dollars at our, at our middle school. And we did it in Spanish and Somali right now. And it's reaching out to parents about hotspots. So on an e-learning day, letting them know. And our high school's gonna use the document too because it's very, it's very close. So just to let you know a little bit about the Achievement Integration Dollars that we're starting to roll on that. Deanna will, you know, I said one of the things is who's in charge of it. Now that our administrative assistant has been hired and we're moving forward with that, Deanna will be in charge of TransAct, meeting with principals, meeting with secretaries, doing training. And also the administrative assistant will also be working on that as well on TransAct coming up in the future. So I thought that was good news, I just wanted to let you know about that. At our technology committee meeting, the high school has reached out to students about the, I call them hotspots, I don't know if that's the proper terminology, and/or Chromebooks. To about would you need it borrowed out, do you have access, et cetera. And the, the great news is, most students are saying that they need the device more than they need the hotspot. So that's good, because we have more devices than we have hotspots. And I think at the high school right now, there are only 17 students that have the need, have the need right now. And they, they did send some of the hotspots out to some students to see if they're working in the outer areas of the community. And they found that some students wanted to go to spots where they shouldn't be going and it blocks them, and we can see that. So, what's good is, kids will be kids. So, and the good news is that it worked, that we could see that they were, tried to access and they couldn't get there. So, we're gonna roll that out now even deeper at the middle school. And get more direct contact with, with parents on that, et cetera. Just to let you know, I will leave a note for the interim soup, but I'm letting you know as a board too, we are gonna have to hire more special needs staff next year for our LEAP program. We have a bubble right now in our ECSE. And I, I wanna say 13 to 14 students coming into our elementaries. And that might mean, that might mean two full FTEs for our LEAP program. And I think, I would guess about six years ago, we had one LEAP program. And we'll have three LEAP programs next year. And Dave's not worried about the space. There aren't high numbers in these programs typically. But as you know, special education teachers are getting tougher and tougher to find. So yeah.
Just for people that are listening, and possibly for me, could you dig back into your acronym memory and tell us what LEAP stands for?
I can't.
I'm sorry, as soon as I started asking that question, I realized I probably shouldn't. But it's a program that's targeted at high need.
High, high need.
Early elementary.
Yes, students.
Students.
Yes, it is.
And they may have high.
These are students that we've already.
Intellectual and physical needs.
Yes, we've already identified them at maybe one and a half, two years old, they've been in our program.
Okay.
Which then means if we have a bubble coming through, I just wanna let you know as a board.
Be there for 12 years.
They're here for, and at 917, the sister program to our LEAP, or the, the students would then go to the son program in 917. And we've already had a waiting list to get into son already. And I know that there can be then some frustrations for parents, frustrations for our staff because there's a waiting program, but 917 has the same problem that we have and that's getting the staffing for it.
The acronym is Learning Early Achieves Potential.
Thank you. And I didn't tell Dave that I was gonna mention that, but Dave didn't wanna go begging to the interim soup and say, hey, I know you're the new kid on the block and I have two more teachers, so I just thought I'd mention it now that we do know that this is, is coming. I wanna mention that, you know, 10 or 11 years ago, when we first got into the pay equity comp worth review cycle, there was a lot of pain for it when a district hasn't done it for, well, forever. Because people then start comparing their job to other jobs and there's that internal comparison of what do I do compared to you, et cetera. And plus, there was some pain back then because the board had to put caps in place in certain things, whether it be vacation days or sick leave days and grandfathering through. I just wanted to let you know that Jen and Deanna have already been working on it. We've been talking about it probably a week ago about, do, is it our responsibility to directly email an employee and say it's up for review when we do put it in the agenda and it goes out to employees? But that is one of the things that we're gonna do. We'll dissect the employee group and send out an email to them saying that their, their group is up for, for review. Jen had already been lining up a meeting with principals to talk about the pay equity review again because they have a responsibility in signing off and saying they agree with, that those individuals do those, those jobs. I think that, I don't think, I know that almost every employee, as they get more work, they believe that their pay equity goes up and that's not typically the case. It's the job responsibilities within it. So, having said that, there's two components to that, just number one, that we're gonna email directly the groups and let them know. And then we are going to, at the December board meeting, I'm gonna ask you for approval for adding into this group, the PSAs and the secretary groups, they're two of our larger groups, to add them in for a review for this year. And you can decide as a board whether you want to do that or not. But I'll be bringing that to the December 11th board meeting, which is just three and a half weeks away. I just wanted to say that we, we did interview for the administrative assistant. I sent it all, email late this afternoon, that will come to the board for approval. Becky, as she likes to be called, her first name's Rebecca, but she goes by Becky. She'll be starting with us on December 2nd. I wanted to share that, the fundraising report, I, I gave it to you, that's another new statute, that you don't have to vote on it, you don't have to approve it. But the superintendent in November and May has to give you a fundraising report. We would've given this to you earlier, but we were waiting on one or two of our administrators to get, get us their list.
So this is in three groups because we've got middle school, this is a single sheet, athletics is a group, and then everybody, high school. Okay, and there's no elementary?
No, but if you as a, if you as a board member, now again, in defense of our administrators, this is the fundraising that they know. There might be fundraising going out, I mean.
For instance, I only see one Chipotle dinner on here. There's way more than that. I mean, Chipotle is so generous that they let just about every group have a Chipotle night.
So anyway, we will keep working on this list, like I said, yeah, I, we see the emails come across our school district email. And you're right, it's probably 10 Chipotles to 15 a year. If, if you as a board member look at it and you see, I'm not comfortable, why is that group fundraising? Or what is it for, or I have a problem with that, we'll discuss, you'll discuss it at a work session. Again, as a school district, we appreciate the money that gets raised for our students, definitely. But as we, but as we see, there's a continued pattern from the state expecting you as a board to know what's going on. And then my last one, oh, two more. I know that I have superintendent staff advisory tomorrow and I'll just be absolutely shocked if it's not kudos to you as a board for giving off the elementary from school this week. I was getting emails and text messages from staff while they were in the training, some of them saying this is the best training I've ever had. And I was able to be there, well, you were there, so you're nodding your head that yes.
I heard the same from Jesse Holm yesterday as well.
Yeah, it was, usually you only get that feedback when you do a survey or you ask for it. So it's very, it's very unusual for staff to reach out to you and say, wow, this was good. And it was coming from veteran staff members. It was, and it was, and it was the training on, for lack of a better word, how do you respond whether you're a PSA, a cook, a secretary, et cetera, to a student who is having some behavioral issues? And it's, it's a five-step process. And it seems, isn't it, five, yep? Five-step process, and it seems easy when you're sitting there. But I went home to my daughter who teaches fourth grade and tried to give her some situations. It's not as intuitive as you think because one of the things is to be very positive when a student is being very disruptive. And she said, Dad, you weren't that way when I came home at 2:00 in the morning and missed my curfew. You didn't say, well, I'm glad to see you're home. Because that's supposed to be the first supportive statement. Well, I'm really glad to see that you're home. You at least came home this evening. So, but what was really good about it and really important was that our PSAs, our cooks, our secretaries, our teachers were all there. Because it might be more intuitive for a PSA to do it, or a secretary, or a custodian to do it than a teacher. And you might be going down the hallway and the, and the PSA might be able to hop in and, and, and do it. So it was really good. But I can tell you what this is gonna mean for you as a board, the middle school should really have it. So.
Well, when this came up with, in conversation yesterday, and I would agree with that, is we all know adults don't learn things being exposed to at one time. So I, I wanna make sure that, as important as this was and as positive as it was, that, that we strike a good balance to, to keep focused on it and keep supporting people in it. I, I have no idea what that looks like, but I want that to always be part of our staff development conversation. And, and I get it, it resources our time and treasure and we probably, we're gonna need both.
Yeah, and I came back to Jen Reichel and immediately said that. That because it wasn't intuitive for me to think like that immediately. And she said, it's pretty easy at a staff meeting to just give everybody one scenario and say, hey, turn to your neighbor and say, oh, you're, I mean, you can practice it in one or two minutes like that. Of course, in the heat of the moment, when a kid is very disruptive, that changes your thinking too. But anyway, I just thank you as a school board. Thank you to the elementary principals who found this individual, not cheap. But the way that we did it was the most cost-efficient way and I think the best way that we could do it. And I know it's gonna be coming for the middle school too because that word will spread. And I'm not to say that the high school doesn't need it. But typically behaviors by that point in time, the maturity level, the child development has changed. And/or some of those very disruptive students are now in other programs with more intense therapy. And then my last one, this might be corny, but let's just do it anyway. Turn over a sheet of paper and take a pen, this is a little quiz. And you can grade yourself on this quiz and people in the audience, you can do this too. This is definitely a heavy drip from me, for those of you who know that I like to drip. But these are over the years, things that I've talked to board members about. And nobody's gonna ask you to turn your paper. But if I asked you right now, you know, and, and I'll say that, people will say that I know finances, et cetera. I know the big picture, but I know how to hire people very well for finances. And I knew to hire Kim Frye. I'm sure you're watching Kim because you're probably watching the audit report, because that stuff excites you. I've hired Jen. And I hire people that know finances inside and out. But these are some core things that I think as a board you shouldn't forget. So write down on a piece of paper, your answer to this, 2 plus 2 equals what?
Do you want me to show it to you?
No, no, just.
I know the right answer to this.
2 plus 2 equals what? And the answer is 6. Because when you're negotiating, you give a $2,000 raise in year 1, $2,000 year raise in year 2, it costs you $6,000, the district. Don't ever forget that principle in negotiations. On the Hastings contract, giving 0% and giving nothing costs a district what every year? For all contracts.
For all contracts?
So if you give every employee a 0% increase, what does it cost the Hastings School District year after year? The answer, $1 million. $1 million. So by doing nothing, it costs you $1 million. And I'll just throw this in there, you know, people, you know, talk about finances and whether or not you're good at finance. I would argue back that by being able to have finances, you're able to provide programs for students. And that's been a core for me. I, I stick with the finances because as we've dropped 800 students, we still have the same number of teachers that we did back in 2003. Finances mean programs and teachers in the classroom. And that's why I do focus in on it. This would be not a question, but in any contract that you, I'll just make this as a statement, in any contract that you negotiate, always take it times 10. Always take it times 10. And I'm gonna give you an example, and this was what a superintendent shared with me 30 years ago. Because on the surface, when you're talking to somebody, the number seems pretty small. So, the other day we were negoti, Deanna was sitting with me as we began some negotiations with our hourly and our, the Teamsters. And the Teamster representative, he said to me, Tim, that's only 50 cents an hour. So it seems, and at first your gut is, yeah, it's only 50 cents an hour, you should get 50 cents an hour raise. You should get 50 cents an hour raise. Well, if there's 2,000 hours in a year, that's $1,000, times 50 employees, that's $50,000, times 10 years, that's a half a million dollar decision over a 10-year period. And you as a board are making decisions for people that are gonna be sitting in your place up to 10 years from now. So keep, don't take things times, times small. And I know you're getting tired of this little game, so I'll just do my last one. But these are drips. If you were to try and find out if Tim Collins is a good superintendent or not, who would be the six people you would talk to? Not board members. Who would be the six people or positions that you would talk to? And I'm not gonna, you're either thinking of it in your mind. Is it Pat Regan, the bus company owner? Is it a business owner downtown? Is it Ann Henning, a teacher? No, it's none of them. They don't, they don't know that I'm a good superintendent or not. The people who know whether I'm a good superintendent are your director of finance, your director of special ed, your president of the union, Jesse Holm, your teacher rights representative, who sits in on meeting after meeting with discipline issues for staff, the assistant to the superintendent, and then. the Assistant to the Superintendent, and then the Lead Principals. They're the ones that know what a superintendent does day in and day out, and if he or she holds people accountable. The people, the community, they don't really truly know. So when I hear, we need to listen to the people, that scares me. Because you as board members know if an administrator holds people accountable or not. You've heard the stories. And you know whether, so as you're looking for the next superintendent, I sure hope that the number one thing that you're looking for is somebody that holds people accountable because that's what helps the entire system. Holding people accountable. And then, of course, you want everything else. Great communicator, blah, 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 that they can do it all. So anyway, that's my little drip for tonight, and we're ready for the board action items.
All right.
Did you all pass the test? Peterson, absolutely.
All right, I think we are up to, huh, let's see, item two, a motion to approve the following change order. So I'll be looking for a motion in a second on this, but let me read through this. So this is change order number five, which is McNamara Field and Buildings from Peterson Companies in the amount of $1,298.22. This is an addition. And change order number seven, which is associated with the Hastings Middle School improvements submitted by Corvall Constructors Incorporated in the amount of $72,919. And that is an addition. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion, second.
Thank you. And we'll open it up for discussion, and I'm sure Tim will have more information for us on these.
Yeah, I know the, I don't even, the McNamara Field and Buildings, that's, I did not quite honestly look at that one, but, what's that? Okay, even if I looked at it, I wanted to know what that one was. The middle school one, you know, $28,000 hot water supply return. Again, I find it difficult when they were drawing it up that they didn't see that. But we have our staff sitting on these meetings and go through the change orders and say that it is needed. You know, the smoke walls around the science room, I get that. That can be a change in expectations. You know, a chiller water supply return, that might be code too. But those were the three big ones that totaled up to, you know, 50-some thousand of it. So again, because Joe Haas sits in on it, because Jim Huberty has been there. And I never knew that Joe Haas was so tight. Just to give you an example, the gas lines to the science rooms have to be redone once they got into the project. And Joe's first question is, how much do we really use gas in our middle school science labs? Let's just buy some bunsen burners. Well, yeah, maybe. But just to let you know, he is into that project to that level of detail. He is questioning everything, so that's been really good. To see it's the purpose for why we have him there. So, again, I'm looking for approval because they do sit in, Joel and Jim Huberty sit on these change orders. We all went through the work session where it's going to be close, but we're, we're doing pretty good on the middle school bond as well, so I'm looking for your approval.
Just one note, I'm looking at the change order document which was scanned in, and we're looking at it here. And it's not, the amount of 72,919 is not all additions. There's deduction in here as well. There's a deduction here for $5,257 as well. So it's not a one-way street of just money flowing out constantly. There are pieces that are coming back in as well. And to be perfectly honest, I wouldn't know what PR number 83, add isolation valves, hydronic piping shift in J206A, offset CW in J206A.
Did you notice I didn't read that one?
$5,343. I wouldn't know what that is anyway. But I'm sure that Mr. Haas is taking care of that for us. And I thank him for it. Other questions or comments on that one?
Just to highlight that we expected change orders. We always expect those and we budget for them. So it doesn't necessarily mean that this isn't, hasn't been accounted for in the planning that we've done. But it's a change order.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Hearing no other comments, I'll open it up for a vote at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number three, a motion to change the 2019-2020 school calendar to reflect the following changes. No school, middle school students only on Friday, December 20th, 2019, and Friday, June 5th, 2020. Like a motion in a second, please, and then we can open it up for discussion.
So move.
Second.
It is coincidental that Friday, December 20th, is the opening of the new Star Wars movie. That's not the reason that we are giving this day off.
How is it that you know that?
Yeah, how'd you know that?
Huge nerd.
Again, a lot of thought went in this. Our middle school staff has been excellent. Our middle school staff did not ask for this. It was our middle school administration that said, you know, that's our next transition is over the winter break. And there's double moves that now have to take place on this one. So as they're moving teachers back into their rooms, they're now moving other teachers into other rooms, et cetera. Where the first transition we did was just like one move to empty. So we have double moves going on. We talked about, would it be better before the break or after the break? And we felt that teachers would want to do it before the break because if they didn't quite get it done, they could come over break and get it done to make sure that their room was ready in January. And then Friday's the same, or then June's the same thing. Again, we're going to have a, we're starting before Labor Day this upcoming year. And so we want to make sure that we're ready, and that's a final transition as well. I think we'd have, even with these two middle school days, we do have e-learning days, we could have up to three bad weather days and we'd still be okay as far as time. And I know that we just don't want to be okay because we want students in school. But I think out of respect to our teachers and our custodians and the PSAs who are going to help move on those days, it's a recommendation that I'm bringing forward to you as a board for December 20th and June 5th for the middle school only.
And just in the middle school, I noted in talking with some of the teachers, they, I mean, it's not their ideal situation. Some of them that have moved into classrooms that are not, it's not their normal classroom, they've done this already, now we're going to be impacting another group. So just a public thank you to them for their flexibility in this and to our students for their flexibility. And how they treat the school and how they navigate the school, as parts of it are cordoned off and such, they've been, they've been good at obeying the rules and staying out of areas that they shouldn't be in, so. Any other discussion?
My only discussion, and this is just based on a few social media comments I saw about the release of elementary students, is just to, maybe just take our communication about it up a level and have something really clearly on the middle school site and maybe even on the other sites reiterating that it, there is in fact school at Pine Crest, for example, but not at the middle school. As it gets close, people might jot something down in their plans right now, and then it gets to be that week and you go, oh, shoot, I forget, you know, so just to make sure we're, we're like a level beyond clear.
Would it be appropriate to send something out via school connects?
I would think so, but even, even very close to the date. Because I think, I know something went out on the other, on the elementary one, but like really close to the date.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I'll open it up for a vote at this time. Although my son is going to have to bribe me with something. Okay.
You probably already have to take his mod.
I don't. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number four, I'd like a motion to approve entering into a contract with communities and the schools.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for discussion at this time.
I appreciate the fact that you as a board let me, allow me to be vague with it and not have the contract sitting in front of you. We do know that the offer was for, from United Way, that we would pay $15,000 each year for two years. We've had discussion on this. That it probably would be a social worker, it'll be at the high school, Mike Johnson will have a lot of say in it. I know that Peter, you at our work session had talked about pro, I can't remember what it, proof of, proof of concept. I think one of the difficulties with the, and I understand your proof of concept. I just think that for communities and the schools to hire somebody and say that we're just going to try and do this proof of concept first. So I think the board either has to say, we're going to do this for a year and a half or two years, which would be the remainder of this year, and then the following year, or just say then that we're not going to do it. Because I don't know how communities and the schools could go out to somebody and say, I want to hire you. But then six months later, I just, I just think that Mike will, at the high school, help be on the interview team. And that we'll get somebody good, and if not, we'll ask them to shift to a different school. So to me, know that it's going to be for either a year and a half or two years when I do call. If you do approve it tonight, entering into a contract, that's what the contract would be. I don't think I can go to them for a proof of concept. So I just wanted to say that.
If Mike is looking to start at midpoint in the year, then I think the year and a half makes the most sense, rather than going for two years and being in the middle of another.
I think most, yeah, I think most people think in terms of the school year. So I'd agree with you. Yep.
I mean, yeah, we've talked about this a lot at our work sessions.
Yep.
And about pushing to have someone who has a background in social work so that this is an added counselor for the schools. And so knowing that Mike is going to be on the interview team and working with that, I think is important. But I think it's worth trying out as, I mean, we look with our community ed and how we've worked with our local organizations.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments?
I guess the only reason that I was pushing for a proof of concept was to have an out if we were not happy after six months.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that if we're not happy after six months, that we can have a discussion with them.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
So we can get out of the contract.
They definitely want to make us happy. Because they want to grow the program.
I did get the sense from one of the work session discussions when they had a representative that there is, they would be open to having some clause where they could opt out if it's not a good fit organizationally for them, and that we'll have opt-out points to.
I'm guessing where the opt-out would be is the person hired is probably probationary at that time. And they'd probably, if we're not happy, which basically is our high school site, they'd probably tell that person, you're, you know, it's not what we want, we definitely want the continuity. But I think that's where it would happen.
I just wanted to make sure that if we are unhappy after six months, that we have a way to end it.
Yep.
And will we work, that'll be worked into the contract?
I'll try to. That's what I'm saying, if they don't want to, if they don't want to, I'll ask them about probationary period. I think that's how they're going to do it. If Deanna's a social worker, it would be a contract where she is signing that after six months, if she's not working out, communities and the schools will get rid of her. So yeah, if those things don't align, then I'm not going to enter into the agreement.
Do we have anything similar for a contract where it spans multiple years?
Well, we don't, but, well, yeah, no, the bus company you do, but you work it out. 360 social workers is a yearly contract. One of the things with 360 social workers is they're a bigger organization right now. And I think we've only had one situation where it wasn't quite working out. Well, they're big enough where they can pull somebody from another location. Right now, communities and the schools isn't big enough to do that, I don't think. Now, maybe by next year they would be. So if they're not able to have that probationary period and they're with their employee, I'm going to ask them, how would you help us if we're not happy? And if they can't, I'm not going to enter into the contract.
Anything further? Hearing nothing, I'll call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number five, I'd like a motion to approve the 2018 through 2020 collective bargaining agreements for two employee groups, the administrators and our supervisors.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Comments on this one?
My only comment is that we followed the same bargaining perspectives that we did for the principals, so we waited for the principals to get settled. Both of these groups have been very patient. And they understand how it works. Never before had the principals' group gone that long. So number one, I just want to thank them for being extremely patient. And as you know, with some of our administrators, our finance committee brought back some recommendations to move some of those positions, so I'm recommending approval at this time.
Other comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number six, a motion, I would like a motion to approve a resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. And there is a full resolution that we have access to, but I don't think we really need that one. But a motion in a second, and then we'll have some discussion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. And this one is just combining polling places for?
It's for the, well, it probably wouldn't happen unless there'd need to be a special election.
Yeah, true. Because if you don't hold it on a statewide election.
So we just had an election, so for instance, if someone would leave and we would need to fill the position with something other than an appointment, we'd want a special election, no?
Not even, we couldn't get to a special election at this point unless we were going to put money on the ballot. A vacancy would have to be appointed, and we would have to run it on the statewide election day. So this only could happen if you decided you wanted to do a mid-year levy, which, or a bond, you couldn't, there's no other way. It's a requirement of the law that we do this every year before the end of the year. And this year, because the primaries are in so early in the year, they moved it up to November 30th.
All right. Well, we're doing neither of those things, so this doesn't really impact us.
It's just a formality.
Down the road, the board can talk about other elections if they want. I mean, that's something down, down the road, we've talked about that before. I know that the state has opened up the ability to vote more than ever before by coming in and coming into our office or whatever. But I think that's something that the school board in the future can, can talk about. But it shouldn't, it won't pertain to the very near future.
Right.
Right, and so, it's going to be a broken record. It shouldn't affect us, it's very likely that, you know, this would ever come up. And I am still going to bring up the same concerns that I brought last year. And that it, that is, that once we switched to combined polling places, we saw the voter turnout rate in the rural communities cut almost in half. And while you may say that's not a large amount of votes, especially with the election we just had a couple weeks ago when the fourth person and the sixth person had 22 votes in between them, that small number of votes can choose who is on the board, and it can impact four years of board policy. And so those small number of votes can have a big impact. And I, just like last year, still disagree with combining the polling places.
Other comments? All right, this is a roll call vote, so Russ, will you please lead us in then?
Joe Becker. Peter Wissenbach.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen.
Yes.
Dave Pimble.
Yes.
Russ Roloff, yes. Kelsey Waits?
No.
All right, uh, the motion passes five to one. Item number seven, I'd like a motion to approve the resignation of, uh, let's see, two individuals.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number eight, I'd like a motion to approve the change in assignment for two employees.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Just for folks who may be viewing this, all of this is available on the agenda, which is available online. We typically don't read names, uh, but the names are in the agenda. I'll call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number nine, I'd like a motion to approve the employment of three individuals, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, item number seven, other business. So I think we have a couple of things to go through here. So item number one that I have is, as I think everyone knows and certainly everybody in this room knows, we've been very active over the last couple of weeks in our search for the interim superintendent. And yesterday, uh, we spent a, about half the day interviewing candidates and, and collaborating and deliberating on that. We have chosen our, our top candidate. I would like to thank all of the candidates. It was, it was an absolute pleasure to meet each and every one of them. And, uh, we, we really had some high-quality individuals to choose from. So the next step in this process is that the administrative committee, which is myself and Russ and, and Joe, who will be absent. But, so Russ and I will meet tomorrow morning at nine AM and we will be contacting our top candidate to hopefully negotiate a contract with them. So that will be occurring tomorrow morning. At this point, I guess I'd like to talk about if there are any parameters that the board would like set forth with the administrative committee. Now, obviously, we, we have a superintendent with almost two decades of experience with us. And moving to a interim superintendent, um, who obviously does not have, I'll share that, does not have that amount of experience.
Most don't.
Yeah, most don't. Uh, so.
Good or bad.
The, the offering will not be at the pay level that Tim is receiving at this point.
Does MSBA give you any guidance on that or not?
Uh, I've talked offline with Sandy about that to.
Okay.
Yeah, just to.
I was gonna just offer that as, I don't need to hear, I just was like, I would hope that they'd be.
No, no.
A resource.
Nope, she absolutely, she absolutely was. So, um, yeah, I don't know if we have, if anybody has any special guidelines that they would like us to try to adhere to tomorrow. I know, uh, at the interview session, at the end of the interview session, one of our agenda items was to talk about this. You know, in, in terms of, okay, you know, there's different pieces of the contract. What, what would we offer to an interim, you know? This is a six-month, to, to be perfectly clear with everybody in the room and, and anybody who's viewing this at home, this is a six, roughly a six-month position. The person selected, and we were very clear with this with MSBA and we were very clear about this with all the candidates, this is a interim position. This person is certainly, uh, welcome to apply for the full-time position going forward. But in no way, shape, or form does the selection of this person give them any.
Any different standing.
Any different standing going into the, the, the permanent selection. That will be a different process, that will be a different search, so forth. So, uh, everybody is extremely clear on that, so that's good.
The only parameter I would say is, um, I like the fact that you have some transition time. I definitely don't think it needs to be a two, two full weeks. If the person's coming from another district, he or she can meet with me and we can talk about certain dates coming in.
Sure.
So I, I don't think it has to be two weeks. What I would probably do during those two weeks is of course line up some time with me, line up some individual time with the high school principals, then two hours later, meet with the middle school principals, et cetera. So those would be some things.
Yep.
Meet with our office staff.
Exactly.
More on a small transition meeting. I've shared with you that, um, or with the board, I'll be available by phone call at any time. I want Hastings to do very well. So I just, I don't think it has to be, hey, you need to be here by December 9th and boom, 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 boom. So that'd be one parameter, but.
That's great flexibility to have and, and I would agree with that because this person, uh, is employed at this time, uh, as a superintendent and would be, you know, needing to balance that with, with, with being here as well, so. Any other parameters at this point? So things such as, for, for instance, Tim has goals in his, in his contract. This contract for the interim will not have goals. Tim has longevity in his contract. This contract will not have that, you know? So there's some obvious things that, that, that it will not have.
Right, I think it'll be, not, not spare, I think it's, it'll be appropriate level-wise. But, you know, we'll have to recognize, we'll need to grant some leave days. Starting from the first day of service, that, you know, this is a person that is likely gonna want healthcare and dental care and we wanna provide access to that immediately.
And maybe, and maybe they will, and maybe they won't.
Right, so that's, that's a quick conversation.
We don't know.
I feel like if that's something that, that we would offer, if it's.
I think then, I think one of the things, um, I think all of you as board members know that the longevity pay isn't totally longevity pay.
Yes, we know that.
Yeah, we recognize.
So, okay, cause some people in the community don't understand that, that it's long, it's to help pay for my health insurance.
Correct.
Having said that, I think that if you're gonna offer health insurance, um, and if he does, he or she does want health insurance, the two of you maybe should talk to Jen after this meeting or beforehand to kinda talk out, well, how do we do that for this person? Because that's how that got into my contract, was the health savings account and paying the taxes that I had to pay on health insurance because of Affordable Care Act, it wasn't though. So anyway, I would just talk to Jen about those legalities in case he or she does bring that up.
Jen, you'll be here tomorrow as well? Of course you will.
I don't, if you wanna use my office to do the phone calling from, because I'll be in here.
Yeah, we'll be in a public space wherever that may be, so if we would.
My office would be the best because.
If we would be in your office, it would be.
Cause I'm gonna be.
People would be welcome to join us in there.
Cause I'm gonna be in a, um, administrative meeting here at nine thirty. There's fourteen people at that, so.
Okay, so we won't be in here.
Actually, you're just in the next room.
The smaller, the smaller room, that'd be great. That'd be great. Any other guidance for us on that?
I think you've already done it by talking to the MSBA about their guidance on what a good competitive offer would be.
Right. Uh, just one other point, I was tasked with, uh, following up on references. We had talked about following up with three references. I actually was able to contact eight. Yeah, so I went off the script to, uh, off, off the reference list to, to some other folks as well. And certainly, everything was very consistent among those, among those folks, so. No, no red flags, no further questions about anything, so, okay. Okay, so that was item number one. Uh, item number two, uh, over the past week, week and a half, it's come to the board's attention. We've had a ongoing investigation with Dakota County, with the Dakota County Attorney's Office. And they are asking to speak to some of our staff. So they asked to speak to a number of our staff. I don't recall the number, but it was somewhere south of twenty. And almost everybody met with them and cooperated and provided the information. But we did have a handful that chose not to do that. So I didn't quite, the concern was brought to me and I didn't know how to respond. So I consulted our policies and I couldn't really find, I mean, I could go into the ethics policy, I could go into some, but nothing that really applied. So, and, and the reason that this, you know, it, it is, I presume, again, I'm not an attorney, but I presume it's their right not to, not to do that. But as an employer and as a taxpayer, uh, I think we need to look at that because that does come with a cost then to the district. Because if these people choose not to speak with the Dakota County Attorney's Office, then presumably, they will be subpoenaed and they will need to be off school at, you know, on, on school business time, which means that we'll have to have a substitute and so forth. So again, we're not talking about a massive cost here, but it is, it's a cost. So I just didn't know what to do with that. So what I would propose, if the board agrees, uh, what I would propose is that we kick this to the policy committee because I don't know what the right response is. And it could very well be that the correct response is nothing. But I think the policy committee, I would ask that they reach out to MSBA for some guidance on this. So thoughts?
Yeah, I would support that. I, I sort of had the same question because I, I can imagine there's a, there's a employer interest in, in providing, you know, the best information possible, almost accurate information, um, to another, to a, to a legal entity. But I can see where an individual may have a, a right not to participate. But it's, it, it's not clear to me. And I, so I feel like this is, this is like how policies happen. If a situation comes up that's not clearly addressed or identified, and then you investigate that and you think, all right, how, where's our, where's our district's interest? Where's an individual's interest and how can we clarify our position? Um, whatever that needs, needs to be. And it has that come up in other places that MSBA could provide guidance on and say, yeah, it has come up in other places and this is, this is a way to approach it. So I would like to investigate it a little bit more, just to make sure that we're, we continue to be stronger every time we have a.
Right. Yeah, and like I said, it could be that, that, that our policies are exactly what they should be.
Right.
But I, I don't know.
Yeah, it's just an uncommon situation, so we find some of those gaps maybe.
Yep.
Use them, see what they say.
Okay, so I know the policy committee is meeting again in December, so if they could take that on as well. Other, other thoughts? Anybody object to that? Okay, all right, so we'll move forward with that. So some upcoming meeting dates, so tomorrow, Thursday, November 21st, my wife's birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday, even though, even though she's.
Star Wars and now it's your wife's birthday, what else?
I know, I know. Lots of personal information coming out tonight. So, uh, tomorrow, nine AM, uh, we will have a special board meeting, as the others have been. This will be an open meeting, uh, even though it's only with the administrative committee. So we do not have a quorum of the board, but it is still an open meeting. And we will be contacting, uh, the top candidate that we have and hopefully negotiating an agreement with them. And then, um, Monday evening, and this is a little bit different time. So that, so that's tomorrow, nine AM, here in the district office. I believe we'll be in the room next door. Uh, and then Monday, November 25th, at six thirty PM, we'll be back in this room. And that is another special board meeting where I believe the only action item will be, hopefully, approval of our hire for interim, interim superintendent. And then our only board meeting, I believe in December, is Wednesday, December 11th. That is our truth and taxation meeting as well, and that's standard time, six PM, right here.
Tim, do you anticipate there'll be a work session, short work session associated with that or?
Uh.
Not really.
No.
I'm not, I don't have anything else I'm doing, but.
No, I just figured we'd talk about whatever at that meeting.
Put, just put it in the course of the meeting itself.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other business before the board this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Very good, yes, I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign? We are adjourned. Thank you.